Good evening, I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, February 26th, 2019 to order in at 6:30. I ask that you please stand before the invocation by Roger Wills from Trinity Free Methodist Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your sovereignty over us. We accept your love toward us, and we ask that you will guide and bless all that we do. Bless this council meeting tonight. Guide the decisions that are made, bless those that are making presentations. May their thoughts be clear. Lord bless us, we pray. We trust in you to supply every need that we have. Bless our town, our state, and our nation, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Berndt.
Span.
President.
Lenjack.
Here.
Yuzlak.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
President.
Here.
And Lamarka.
Here.
And Hardaway.
President. We have seven presidents, we have a quorum. Um, is Ms. Perez here? Nicole Perez? From MIS? Okay, see if she's not here. Alright, uh, petitions, communications, and remonstrations. We have a couple proclamations tonight. First one being, uh, for next month is Disability Awareness Month. Is Denise, come forward, please. We're proclamation for chasing the dreams, uh, for Disability Awareness Month. It says, whereas the month of March has been designated as Disability Awareness Month, to celebrate and recognize people with disabilities by the Governor of the State of Indiana. Whereas disability is a natural part of human experience, and in no way diminishes the right of individuals with disabilities to live independently, enjoy self-determination, make choices, contribute to society, and experience full in the economic, political, social, cultural, and educational mainstream of American society. And whereas family members, friends, and members of the community can play central role in enhancing the lives of people with disabilities, especially when the family and community provide with necessary support services, the public and employers, and employers are aware of the capabilities of people with disabilities to be engaged in competitive work-inclusive settings. And whereas goals of this town and state properly include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions in, in the, in homes, in communities, whereas individuals can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their families, communities, state, and nation, have interdependent friendships and relationships with others, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now therefore, the town of Maryville does thereby proclaim the month of March as Disability Awareness Month in every year hereafter in the town of Maryville. Furthermore, encourage the citizens of Maryville to seek counsel and input, any person or group with knowledge and expertise in matters concerning disabilities. Whereunto we have set our hand and call for this sealed town of Maryville, Richard Hardaway, Town Council President.
Don't move.
Um, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we proclaim March as Disability Awareness Month. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? I'll go.
I've seen you there. God bless you. Uh, Councilwoman Baron, you got one?
I don't have my glasses on.
Uh?
I don't really, I didn't know if I was gonna read it.
It's hell. I just struggle through one.
Proclamation honoring Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team. Whereas the Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team honored their school and their families, which have distinguished them by achieving a distinction of having all fourteen varsity wrestlings complete in semi-state, and also advanced in the wrestling to compete in the HIHS, I'm sorry, IHSAA State Championship through their skill and determination. And whereas the Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team, led by the head coach David, assistant coaches Paul, Joe, Tom, had a season of record of thirteen wins, one loss, six one conference records. And whereas the Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team impeccable record with their fifteenth straight IHSAA sectional team title in the regional championships, with the six individual championships, one runner-up, third place, fourth, I'm sorry, fourth place in Southmore, Matt Hall placed sixth in, at the state. And whereas the Town Council of Maryville, Indiana desires to recognize and honor the achievements of the Maryville Pirates Varsity Wrestling Team, and their names are as follows. Matt Hall, and I do apologize if these are any mispronounced. Matt Hall, Marion Cruz, um, Benekio Currves, John Maldonado, Alexander Radeski, Anthony Rivera, Jacob.
Maldonado.
Maldon, thank you, Maldonado. Devin Pope, Elijah Sandridge, James.
Jason.
Sorry, Jason.
Brick.
Brick. Is that Chris Walton?
Yeah, yeah, Chris Wal, uh, whoa. Siwi, Akayumi.
And then Drew Barry, Anthony.
Drew Bailey.
Oh, sorry. I did not have my glasses on.
Anthony Otero.
And I didn't know I was gonna have to read it.
Joshua Kraus. Uh, those, this is the junior varsity wrestling team. The names as follows, Joshua Kraus, Lederin Johnson, Cameron Williams, Zachary Dunn, Tyler Turner, Kerry Baker, Khalid Carter, Anthony Brown, Caesar Franco, Adilik, not gonna try the last name, starts with an I, ends with an I. To John Spann, Austin Voe, Juan Garcia, Zachary Kraus, Joshua Tuggle, DT, Dante Windrum, Anthony Hudson, Rakim Atkins, Zion Garcia, Devonte Williams, Andre Burns, Burden Davis, Isaiah Garcia, Jalen Jones, Lederol Lee, Adrian Lopez, Theodore Sparks. And whereas the Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team, represented Northwest Indiana in town of Maryville in semi-state and state finals, should be applauded for their achievement. Now therefore, town of Maryville does hereby call upon the residents of the town of Maryville to honor the outstanding accomplishments of the Maryville Pirates Wrestling Team, and thank them for their very successful year. Whereunto, our hands are set. Chrissy Baron, Town Council Vice President.
So.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman. Lamarka, that we acknowledged the Maryville Wrestling Team. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you.
I will say.
The coach, around coach. Good job, Coach. Is there anything else under, uh, Communications, Mr. Spires?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, Counciltable Register voucher for approval for February 26th, along with approval of Town Council meeting minutes, February 12th, 12th, 2019.
So.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Was that supposed to be for the 26th?
26th.
Oh, I thought you said the 12th.
The 12th for the minutes.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Standing Committees, Budget and Finance, Councilwoman Baron.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the LG CPA and Advisory Engagement Letter for the Municipality Advisory Services.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve LWG CPAs and Advisors Engagement Letter for the Municipal Advisory Services. Any discussion?
Clarification, Mr. President. This is London Witty Group that has, again, as I said at the Redevelopment Commission, they have been financial advisors to the town since I started in 1997. We've had a thirty-year, very successful relationship with Bob Swentz.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else on the Budget Finance?
No, Mr. President.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
Yes, sir. Mr. President, tonight we have the acceptance of the town's inventory for all these streets and associated improvements in the Hunter's Glen.
I ask you to hold on for a minute and.
I'm sorry?
Let the room clear out.
We'll take a break.
Yeah?
Yeah. Both my people.
Went into the front row, Randy.
Yeah, now you guys all, Randy, you gotta move up to the front row.
Randy, you want a proclamation?
I can make one for you.
I got one for you, Randy. I do a lot of those wrestlers. You're good dudes. Oh, wow. That's huge, just big wrestling school.
I know.
Alright, sir. Uh, back to Hunter's Glen North. Uh, we have the acceptance for these streets and associated improvements in that Phase One. I know in our previous meeting, we had a motion to table, uh, for further discussion. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to lift that table for further discussion.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Pettit, that we, uh, open up the discussion for Hunter's Glen. That's what we're doing right now.
Lifting the table, yes, sir.
Yeah.
What is the address of possibly the area?
This is next to the Hindu Center, Margie, on Maryville Road. Across from Sedona, where Chrissy's at.
Six eighty-seven hundred block.
So that would be in Chrissy's world.
How much money do we, um, do we get a, if, once we set, once we accept these roads into our inventory, now does that mean that we have to pay the money to start Phase Two?
Pay the money?
Yeah.
Not aware that we.
For Eighty-Six Avenue, no?
No, this is just accepting.
This is just accepting Craig's private streets. The question I think we had at the two weeks ago, uh, to Bill and Bruce, or to Robinson, Bob's in the audience, is what's our, uh, what are we now accepting? A letter of credit, or are we accepting a maintenance bond? Because we usually require a two-year maintenance bond on new streets that are accepted into the inventory, in case there's any problems. So I would turn to staff or to legal counsel and say if this issue's been resolved, then we can accept them.
If it hasn't been resolved.
Then.
We've accepted letters of credit in the past.
Yeah.
And they're just as good as a bond. If it's gonna run out, a letter of credit can run out. But I think, um, Joe, you had said that it was probably in the orders that just stated a surety should be provided, didn't say.
It, it didn't say what specific type of instrument should be provided. It just said some type of surety instrument. I think the main thing is whether it's a letter of credit or a bond, you have to have these things calendered by the department that's responsible for them. And to make sure that either the inspection's done on the, and all the improvements are done, if they're not done in a timely fashion, then you guys seize on the bond or the letter of credit.
Correct.
That's what has to happen. Because if they expire, then you're left without recourse. So.
And we've had a lot of those in the past in subdivisions.
That's, that's what we've said. They weren't accepting letters of credit anymore.
Right.
We had trouble with bonds expiring also, because they were not being kept. Those corrections were made a few years ago. We're all good now.
And we're a hundred percent sure, Bob. Everything is buttoned tight, because those that were at the Plan Commission know that there was a, a group from the Hindu Center that is watching this project like a hawk, and they're gonna be calling Chrissy if something goes wrong. So I just wanna make sure, Bob, every, you guys went over it with a fine-tooth comb? Alright. They don't wanna sit in the front row.
I don't blame you. Okay, so, Mr. Minchuck, you can make a motion next up.
I'll defer to, uh, Ms. Baron, it's her word.
I'll make a motion to approve as long as everything is, like it's supposed to be, as far as the engineering standards go. And the letter of credit is in place.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Minchuck, that we accept the, uh, into the town's inventory, all the streets and associated improvements within Hunter's Glen. Phase One subdivision, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Anything else on the Public Works?
Mr. President, I have two, if, if Mr. Minchuck is done.
But.
Uh, I have two.
I got one also.
I have two, uh, one's an announcement, one's a motion. The announcement, uh, as I see Chaz in the audience, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bruce, but we're gonna be closing 101st Avenue for the entire season between Mississippi and Georgia Streets, starting March 4th. Is that correct?
Correct. Uh, it's estimated for a hundred, a hundred and fifty days.
A hundred and fifty day closure. That'll be a brand.
And once that's open, the project still is scheduled to be completed until probably mid to later November.
Okay. And again, that is a widening and rebuilding by NDOT of the 101st Avenue Bridge over I-65, four lanes. And then we will do four lanes on each approach between Mississippi and Georgia Street out of our, our TIF districts. The other item, Bruce, and I think you, I don't know if you gave this to me or you gave this to Jeff, do we wanna enact this agreement between owner and engineer, between the town of Maryville and Butler, Fairman, and Cypher?
Yes, what it is, um, this is a joint project that was done between, between the town and, uh, NDOT. Uh, the town actually paid for the design work for the 101st Avenue project. Uh, NDOT is going to be paying for the construction inspection work. Uh, we just recently found that out. Now, Butler and Fire, excuse me, Butler, Fairman, and Cypher did the design engineering. So this contract is for not to exceed amount, uh, for thirty-nine thousand dollars, for them to be on call, so when there's some issues out there and we need to bring in the design engineer, that we have them on contract, so they can come out and do the work as necessary.
Alright. Mr. President, I make a motion that we accept the agreement between Butler, Fairman, and Cypher and the town of Maryville not to exceed thirty-nine thousand for engineering services on 101st Avenue Bridge.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we accept the agreement between Butler, Fairman, and South Maryville not to exceed thirty-nine thousand. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven.
And Mr. President, I just wanna give a big thank you to Bruce. I normally thank NDOT, but I will go on the record in thanking them. Uh, this has been one of my big projects, getting this, uh, going for the southern portion of Maryville. Bruce, Yeoman's effort, thank you very much. You're welcome. For getting this done.
Anything else under Public Works, Bruce? Did you say you had something?
That was it.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
No, sir.
Okay.
Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarka.
I have no report tonight.
Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Councilman Pettit.
Mr. President is obviously with a heavy heart, and I think we all know, we were informed, uh, earlier that, uh, our town manager, Bruce Spires, is gonna be retiring August 31st. Uh, Bruce has dedicated his life to the town of Maryville through Public Works, and is our town manager, and those are gonna be some big shoes to fill. Uh, I won't get too emotional with him, because he's a good friend. Uh, with that said, I would like to instruct Bruce, um, with Joe's oversight, to post the job opening per our Personnel Manual internally. Once that period is passed, depending on the applicants, uh, I'll be calling a Personnel Executive Session to discuss the next step in selecting the town manager. If there are no candidates at that point, that'll probably be sometime in March. How long is it, Bruce? You said it was two weeks?
Yes.
You post the job for two weeks internally at Prusen Center, throughout the, you know.
Traditionally, we just posted it in everyone's department, in department, alright.
What month are you retiring, Bruce?
Uh, I'm looking toward the end of August.
The end of August, so we have to have someone there before that?
Well, that was one thing for the, for the Executive Session, Margie, but in, as Chairman, I would recommend to the rest of the committee in the council that we have someone onboard by July 1st to work with Bruce for two months before he leaves, get acclimated with Stacy, how we were on the meetings, working with Gene's office and, and everything else, and Joe's, uh, legal advice. Uh, so I would target July 1st as a start date for the new person, whoever it may be. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
Uh, yes, I have several, I had several calls about, um, the, what they have to call, can't even think, the holes in the ground.
Hot holes.
Hot holes, thank you. Anyway, the fourth ward is really filled up with them. I called Bruce, I think, today or yesterday, and you got someone out there, didn't you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're all over town, they're all over.
I imagined that, but I was just going to let you know I'll be calling you tomorrow with more addresses.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you just wanna give Kevin a call to wrap.
Yeah, I can do that.
That would be awesome.
Usually when I call you, it gets it done right away, though.
Well, then call me.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Spoiled you too, huh?
Yeah.
Can we call you when plowing comes in December down in Greenwood? Okay. I don't know if he's gonna answer the call, though.
Make sure it's on a Sunday morning on your way to church.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, uh, Parks Direct, Councilwoman Lamarka.
Um, last meeting, um, I made a motion to table the Impact Study Advisory Committee. I wanted to, uh, make a motion to lift that tonight, and then I will give it to Jan to tell us about, um, the new person she selected.
Second. Motion by Councilwoman Lamarka, second by Councilman Span, that we lift the, uh, table for the Impact Fee, uh, where is it at? There. Study Group and Study Advisory Committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Seven zero. Okay.
Um, Jan, did you want to?
I just have, uh, two other things, um, on my agenda this evening. Uh, as you all are aware, the park's in its, uh, five-year, in preparing its five-year master plan. There is a public meeting at Prusen Park on Tuesday, March 12th. I know that's the same day as a council meeting, um, but, uh, it was the best day for us to hold the first master plan meeting. Uh, the public is invited, it'll be at Prusen Park, 5750 Tyler Street, at 6:00 PM. It'll be a first of quite a few, uh, public meetings to prepare the master plan. And the only, uh, last thing that I have on my list is, um, if you ever, if, if anybody has driven past Broadway, you'll notice that the future home of Maryville Community Center sign is gone. The winds were, um, these are the winds on Sunday, um, the fifty to sixty mile an hour winds. The sign actually was ripped off of the post and flew like a sail across Broadway and ended up at El Publito Restaurant and Grocery Store. Um, that's pretty serious, it could have actually sliced somebody. I mean, a lot of damage could have been done. We are not going to put up a sign right now, as the weather is pretty crazy. Um, but I can tell you that back in January, I did put liability insurance when I knew that we had purchased the property. There's liability insurance on that property right now. So, and that's all I have this evening.
Which property was that jammed?
Side.
Oh, sorry, man.
Where was it? What property?
I wanna make a.
On that property, yeah.
Make a motion for the Impact Study Advisory Committee to approve them.
You wanna make your motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Lamarka, second by Councilwoman, uh, Baron, that we approve the Impact Study Advisory Committee, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Anything else on the Parks and Right? Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron, Councilwoman Baron.
I want to announce that the CAP program has now back-started, so anybody that has their CAPs that they wanna bring in for the recycled benches, to go ahead and bring them in. Um, Jan, are we gonna go ahead and bring those to you again? For the CAPs? We're just having.
No problem, because we, once, once we fill up the bins that we have, we ship everything off to the North Barn and start all over again.
And then Matt, did you have anything?
Um, we're just reviewing all the paving projects and the drainage associated with that, so we'll get all that wrapped up before paving starts. Uh, one project in particular might be a bridge up 78th, just used to Woodcombe or Kaiser Ditch Cross at 78th. Uh, we're having Robinson look at that, and might be some engineering and some other assessments involved in that replacement, as well as permitting, so. Just wanna let you guys know, thanks.
Anything else on environmental? Elections and public relations, Councilwoman Yuzlak.
No report at this stage.
One more time, is anyone here for MIS? Yes, ma'am, come forward, please. Okay, this is Nicole Perez. Thanks, Perez, right? Thank you. Okay, Ms. Perez is from the, uh, MIS. She's gonna be the lady that's spearheading our, uh, municipal day. Between the high school, I mean, between MIS and Town Council. And you want, what did you need to do? Come forward, please. What did you need to do tonight? These are all of us, except the fire chiefs in the back, and the only other person that we're missing is our, um, code enforcement lady, because she's off sick.
Um, I just wanted to take like a small video of each of the members.
Okay, you, you, now's your time.
Okay, I'll get my eye cut.
Mr. President, while she's doing that, under, uh, Councilwoman Yuzlak's committee, uh, just a reminder, folks, that March 19th, uh, I will be partnering with Congressman Wiskowski at the Chamber Luncheon at Gamba's at noon. Uh, I will be delivering the State of the Town address, and the Congressman will be there, uh, as well, making a presentation on Northwest Indiana. So if you'd like to go, uh, let Stacy know, and she can make your reservations.
All department heads?
Yes, all department heads.
We're gonna start, hey, where is it at?
Did you say Gamba's?
Gamba's.
Gamba's. Okay, we're gonna start there, and we'll come all the way, what do you want, what do you wanna do? Okay. Right, okay, very good. Okay, everybody get that. Okay, go ahead. Speak up, Joe.
You ready? I'm Chief Joe Petrush, Maryville Police Department. I'm in charge of the police department, and we have a sixty-man, uh, police force. I attend the Town Council meetings, uh, twice a month, and I'm here to serve the public.
Hi, I'm Matt Lake. Hi, I'm Matt Lake, I'm the Director of Stormwater Management, and, um, we make sure that there's, uh, flood control and water quality, um, aspects, BNP's in place to conform the federal and state regulations, and to make sure, you know, that the roads and everything are passable, and people don't flood out, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Arlich, I'm the Director of the Park Department. My responsibility is to develop new parks within the town of Maryville, maintain our existing parks, uh, provide recreational programming, and special events for the community.
Hi, my name is Don Spann.
Hi, my name is Don Span, Councilman Behrens. I had a service today, constituents and my lord. Make sure things are tip-top, best to my ability.
Hi, I'm Jeff Minchuck, Town Councilman, I'm here to represent the Maryville residents of Ward Number Three, thank you.
Hello, I'm Margaret Yuzlak.
Oh, wait a second, folks, I just know, did you notice something? You're backwards, guys, you need to re-tape Jeff, Jeff, you're not Ward Four, Margaret Yuzlak.
I said, I said my name.
He said it was Ward Four.
He said it, yeah. No, just switch the whole thing.
Oh, we didn't know that, did we?
That's okay.
That's alright.
It's our, it's our little insight, Joe. It's been our little insight.
Roger did the room?
Roger, you don't look like a Joe.
Well, I love Joe, though.
I gave all the proper information.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, you have to do it again.
Take two, Jeff Minchuck, Ward Number Three, representing the Merrill Riddens for my ward, thank you.
Hello, I'm Margaret Yuzlak, Councilwoman of Ward Four, and I make sure the streets are paved, our parks are in order, and take all calls from my constituents. We have several calls going on now with the hot holes in the area, thank you.
My name is Gene Gerzey, I'm the Park Treasurer, I'm the only full-time official. My job basically is keeping the records of the town.
My name is Richard Hardaway, I'm Town Council President, and I represent Ward Two. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Joe Svetinoff, I'm the Town Attorney for the Town of Maryville. I counsel, I provide counsel to the Town Council here, and make sure that I answer and attend to all their legal needs and issues, thank you.
Hi, I'm Chrissy Behrens, I represent Ward Five, and I am to represent all my constituents in Ward Five, and then also represent the rest of the constituents in the Town of Maryville.
Hi, I'm Sean Pettit, I'm the Councilman for Ward Six. I also serve as Plan Commission President and the Redevelopment Commission President. I represent the entire East Side, the Town of Maryville, east of Broadway, out to Porter County Line, as the largest ward of the seven council members.
Hi, I'm Roxanne Lark, I represent Ward Seven in Maryville, I'm Chair of the Parks Committee, and also Council Affairs, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean, I'm the Building Director, and I'm responsible for accepting and issuing building permits, both commercial and residential. We also provide other services in our office, business license, rental registration permits, and I'm also responsible for the process.
Hi, I'm Bill Laird, I'm the Director of Planning for the Town of Maryville. I work with landowners, builders, developers, coordinate, facilitate development within the town for subdivisions and zoning, and also facilitate the process with the Plan Commission here for the town.
Hello, my name is Bruce Spires, I'm the Town Manager, but my main function is guidance and advice to town council members to assist them in probably during their position.
So, that way the students know what you can do when they're ready, they're essaying to shadow one of you guys, very many municipal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you need anything else from us, please let us know, okay? Thank you. Okay, uh- Economic Development, Councilman Pettit?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, we have two items under this committee. The first, they're both actions that were taken by the Plan Commission as a recommendation to the council. The first is vacating certain recorded plaits of subdivision pursuant to the provisions in the Y and W subdivision. I make a motion that we approve the vacation and the findings of the Plan Commission as presented by Mr. Svetinoff.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Behrens, that we approve the subdivision vaca- vacating certain records and plaits for subdivision pursuant to the division in the Y and W subdivision, any discussion?
Mr. President, this is the first step, we need to vacate the old subdivision of the property that we bought for the community center. As you will all recall, at the last meeting, we engaged Structure Point to develop a new plat for that property, so we need to vacate, and Joe will do that at the County Recorder's Office, vacating that plat, so that when we go to record the new one, everything is clean, correct, Mr. Svetinoff?
Correct, Councilman Pettit.
All in favor?
Aye. The next one, Mr. President, is also a vacation of certain recorded plaits of subdivision pursuant to the provisions in the Broadfield subdivision. Again, a recommendation from the Plan Commission, um, we have a potential petitioner and potential developer in the Broadfield subdivision north of the Town Homes. In a nutshell, there was a plat that was never properly recorded, Bill, and a PUD ordinance that was never properly acted on by a previous Town Council Administration. This, between Bill and Joe, they feel this will clean up this situation, and the new petitioner can file his petition with the Plan Commission in April or May. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we vacate certain recorded plaits and subdivisions pursuant to the provisions in the Broadfield subdivision, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Anything else?
That's all.
Utility lands on, Councilman Span? No report. Abandoned properties, no report. That concludes committee reports, general orders, first reading ordinance, ordinance nineteen dash zero four, and ordinance amending eighteen dash zero nine, the Town Deferral Program in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzlak, that we approve ordinance nineteen dash zero four, any discussion? Roll call. Span? Yes. Minchuck? Yes. Yuzlak? Yes. Behrens?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And Hardaway? Yes. Struggling over? Yeah, I am. Ordinance nineteen dash zero five, in ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, creating budget line items within the local user fee fund. So moved. Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, approve ordinance nineteen dash zero five, any discussion? Roll call, roll call, Mr. Gerzey. You struggling too, huh? Yeah. Span? Yes. Minchuck? Yes. Yuzlak? Yes. Behrens?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
And Hardaway? Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance nineteen dash zero six, in ordinance of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, depleting monies of the twenty-nineteen budget within certain funds mandated by the Department of Local Government Finance. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve ordinance nineteen dash zero six, is there any discussion? Span? Aye. Minchuck? Yes.
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Hardaway? Yes, motion carries seven to zero, that concludes first reading ordinance, is second reading ordinance, is ordinance nineteen dash zero one, and ordinance vacating in Eastman in the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, and all matters related thereto. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilwoman Span, that we approve ordinance nineteen dash zero one on second reading, any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, we have to open it up for public comment, is there any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash zero one? Any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash zero one? Any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash zero one? Roll call. Span? Yes. Minchuck? Yes. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
And Hardaway? Yes, motion carries seven to zero. Ordinance nineteen dash zero three, ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer of Town of Maryville to make certain disbursements for necessary or emergency payments prior to confirmation of claims. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzlak, second by Councilman Span, that we approve ordinance dash zero three, nineteen dash zero three, on second reading, any discussion? Because this is the second reading ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public comment, any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash zero? Any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash zero three? Any public comment? Roll call. Span? Aye. Minchuck? Yes. Yuzlak?
Yes.
Behrens?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Lamarcus?
Yes.
Hardaway? Yes, motion carries seven to zero. That concludes second reading ordinance, is there's no resolutions, no BGA action, any old business? Any new business? I have one thing, we have, we have a letter that's going to Lake County Board of Commissioners for, it says, "Dear Mr. Repake, please let this communication serve as notification that Edward Yurka, Fire Chief for the Town of Maryville, will represent the Town of Maryville to be of the Lake County Homeland Security slash EMA Advisory Council."
Just a, just a letter, yeah, just direct the town manager.
Right, yeah. Okay, Bruce, I'll give this to you, you can send it to me. Okay. Anything else on the new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment, if there is any public comment, I said you come up, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is James Perez, and this is my first time at any one of these meetings, and I don't know if this is the appropriate venue to bring it up, but there's three safety issues regarding to intersections, just really need some better lighting than they have right now, because when you're, let's say you're on Seventy-third and Van Buren by Edding School, when you make a left-hand turn, especially when it's dark out, the opposing traffic, those headlights are really, really blinding, and there's a concrete median there that says sack trail, and it's really bad, it's blinding. And the other intersection is on Madison, there's a three-way intersection, and again, another median across from that, almost across from the florist shop, and again, opposing headlights, we really need some good lighting there, I'm afraid, or me or somebody else, gonna run into that concrete mid, median there. And the third one, problem is, it's on private property, behind that CVS pharmacy on Route Thirty, they really drive, as you're pulling out to get onto Route Thirty, they drive like maniacs from behind the CVS store, I know this is private property, maybe you can encourage someone to put a stop sign there, so I mean, that's really, really bad back there, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? But no. War Zoning Appeals Meeting will be February twenty-seventh at six-thirty, abandoned blighted properties will be at nine, at ten-thirty, March, are you gonna be able to make ten-thirty?
I don't know yet, I'll call you.
Okay, or tell me what's a good time?
Afternoon.
Two-thirty? Alright, we'll change.
Okay, that'll be fine, okay.
Flights and abandoned properties will be at two-thirty on February twenty-eighth.